Alright, so. Just we um I'll be quoting this so. If in case anyone doesn't isn't here and it's just watching this for the first time hey. Um so yeah, the idea of this is just. I wanted to help you guys with study studying for the final. Um I know that this can be a really challenging. Final or it could be especially given the environment that we're kind of throwing you guys into. Since it is in person that's every stuff what he decided for you guys. So my question is, is there anything I can do concept wise question question wise that you guys want me to go over? Um any concepts that might be kind of foreign to you at least right now. Any concepts that you guys like want me to go over whatever and it's okay you type it or anything like that. Uh that but just what I mean uh induction if you think it's on the test uh. Or there's something that we could ask you so um yeah induction could be on the test um. You want me to go over like the concept of induction or is it that you want me to go over like an example of an induction problem? Um is there a confirmed question and format um? I don't know unfortunately the form uh format wise though I do believe it is all free response. Off the top my head he can uh correct me if I'm wrong but as far as I know. I know them best and no he was discussing he wanted to do it. In a free uh response kind of like. Okay um induction problem okay um how difficult do you want it be to be? How difficult are we talking here? You wanna kind of just see it like as a basic uh induction problem or like kind of in the more advanced sense? How advanced do you want it to uh be? Intermediate okay. Uh let's cut let's go see if I can find some induction problems. I know I have access to at least some decent ones. Question my question like. Okay. So let's pull pull up one. Some intermediate induction problem. That I am kind of a little sore today I just woke up a bit but uh let's see. Speed up a little bit. Okay. Let's try this. So for our study session. Study session. Study session so uh when it comes to induction let's talk induction example okay so prove that. Um let's see prove that for any. Uh arbitrary integers A in the set of integers. Just and B within the set of natural number. Uh was a positive integers for this. Subject actually. Was will come back here uh that. A raised to be is an integer. Let's try it out. Um any question tips about homework three question three? Uh I can also give the tip for that I'll just do it after uh the induction question if that's. Uh okay but I will kind of like talk about. Uh that question uh the homework in a bit okay. Um but okay so this is an example of a kind of I guess a little bit of a induction question. Although it is a little bit tougher um but we can try so what part um. What are the parts that we need need for induction? What's do we need uh for induction? Yeah. When I need a basis step um what else do we need? Mm-hmm and induction. An induction hypothesis and yeah an induction step cool and if we want uh. And and optionally we can make a predicate. Yeah we can do that good so again. Don't need to do we don't need to do predicate if we don't want to this one's a little bit short so I say we kind of skip this one this making a predicate for now. Um but. In the meantime we can still do our three four things that we need to do which is the basis stem our induction hypothesis and our induction step. Okay. Okay um first thing uh first things first actually first. Uh we need to decide we need to decide which variable we are performing induction on. Um so who do we perform induction on? Who's that gonna be? So which one should we do it? Well um which variable here A? Um the problem with A is that if we want to access all integers we need to also look at not only. Uh positive integers we also need to look at zero and negative integers. And induction mathematical induction at least uh has a little bit of a problem when it comes to going backwards. When when in the uh when looking backwards. Yeah we want to do this on B we should do that we should induce. Have a spell we should induce on B. Some sense? Cause B is the positive the arbitrary positive integer. Which is what induction works best on. So far so good. Okay. Um so let's let's do each of these let's do each step one by one and see what happens. So step one. So step one is perform the basis step let's just call it like that. That. So what does the basis step uh requires to do? What are we doing in the basis step? Um not necessarily. Yeah the idea is just in general we want to in general remember remember the first step is to always. Get the first iteration proven. You want to prove that that in in other words uh like in other words think of it think of this as a proof of concept. So it's just hey and we know that it'll work at least one one time. And we're gonna start with these uh smallest value so we know that we have at least uh some starting point. So what's the so what is the smallest value we can have for B? What would be that smallest value that we could have? Yeah it should be one mm-hmm. Yeah one remember uh one is the smallest positive integer. So let's do that. Alright so when so when B is equal to one prove that A to the one. Is an integer. So far so good all I did uh in this first step. Well all I'm doing so far in this first step it's just plugging in one for. Um B and checking if it works so let's try it let's check it let's check it out. Uh what's what can so let's consider A to the one okay uh what's A to the one equal to? Yeah it's gonna be equal to A yep. Yep that's just by some by uh law of exponents right? Okay is is A an integer? No I hmm. Let's double check no yes uh let's double check so if we look at all this thing here it says that A does indeed to be an integer so. Uh looks like it checks out that A does happen to be an integer yep yes our. Our uh problem says so. Says so yeah so so we have successfully proven proven. That A to the one is indeed an integer proving our basis that works. We need to do uh would it not be the case if B? It'd be what uh was able to be negative uh yeah that's why we kind of avoid integer uh inducing on. Integer uh what variables that are integers because you could run into problems with integers because. It's not always the case that one over A uh is an integer in fact rarely is it ever the case. Any questions on how I uh approach this problem or approach this basis stuff? Again just as a quick recap the the basis step is just proving that the smallest iteration in this case for us one. Works so we look at A to the one but should we just prove that A to the one is integer. Um any questions on how I did that? Oh okay. So now let's move on to what's kind of. Now let's underline this guy. Alright so what is uh step two step two is perform uh perform the induction hypothesis. So what uh what do we do in the induction uh hypothesis? We doing when we uh go to the induction hypothesis? Yeah we want to kind of like prove some of the next so. You know. I'm no attract so if we know know uh B equals one works who else should work? Hmm not necessary we don't know that K plus one works right now. Might might take a while to build up to that. Uh K plus one but think of think of the domino analogy think of do uh like as a hint that the domino analogy. Think of the domino analogy. Uh if I knock the first domino over. Domino who shouldn't be knocked over yeah. Kind of um so like. The next domino that would be knocked over would be the second domino so in our sense here that would be if we know. B equals one works works so two should be equals two. Some sense remember the idea is that we're trying to capture every single value of B. We want to capture we want to capture every single instance of B. Because that's what we're proving ev- that every value B works essentially does that make sense so far? Any questions on how I'm kind of a um portrait this remember we're trying to get all values to be so obviously the next one after one is two. And if two works who else should work? Three and so on right? And if we know B equals two works so two so two should be equals three. And we repeat that and we repeat this all the way to the first. K positive integers we're not gonna say that every integer works we're just gonna say that up to a certain uh cap. Uh in that in this cap is well. Um a stopping point I'm gonna define as K you can define it to be anything you want me I'm gonna define it as K. Um so far so good or in T L D R is let's assume that when B equals K. Or some positive integer K that A to the K is an integer. Make sense so far? Or any questions on how I did this induction uh hypothesis? Okay. Now let's talk about our final one. Let's let's talk about the what's called the induction step. So. So we have we proven that the first K iterations of B works. So who else should work? If we know the first K iteration should work. What would be? Yeah this is where yeah the K plus one iteration of B is where we want to talk about this one. This is what that comes into play. The K plus one iteration. Iteration of B should also uh what yeah so or the T L D R is. Prove that if A to the K is an integer. Then so too should A to the K plus one. Some essence? Any questions so far? Again which is saying that if the first K iterations work it should make sense that the K plus one should work. And remember remember in every induction step and notice that. Use the induction hypothesis we want you to use that induction hypothesis whatever it entails. So far so good. Okay so let's so let's look so. We're discussing something about A to the K plus one so let's look at it. Let's look at A to the K plus one. Anything we can do with it? Anything we can do? With A to the K plus one. How how can we split it? Uh just as A? Just kind of like that. I'd be missing a little bit something. A times H to the K yeah I agree with that mm-hmm yeah we can split it as H to the K times H to the one. Yeah that's just by loss of exponent that's when we're following our loss of exponents this is what we can uh end up getting. So far so good on that. Okay so so now we have two values we have. A to the K and A. So is there any uh anything uh anything we know about these two values? How do we know they're integers? How do I know both of these things are integers? Well A is yeah A is an integer we know A is an integer yeah is an integer because it our problem says so yeah. But our problem doesn't say A to the K is an integer. That's not what our problem gives us. Where would we find it? Uh which assumption? Yeah our I and our I H or our induction hypothesis says. That yeah A to the K is an integer. Okay so now I have so now now. I have two integers right uh two integers what happens when I multiply two integers together? It stays an integer yeah it stays an integer uh by by properties of integers. So what does that tell us? Tell us about A to the K plus one. It's an integer as well yeah. And isn't that what we wanted to prove? Indeed so that shows that that shows our induction step. Step works. Which means no matter what positive integer B is. Our original statement holds holds by induction. And that's basically what an induction problem look looks like. Any questions on how induction works? Uh and that's just not do too bad uh it's pretty. Um please rebuild just have to fill in the blanks with some. Uh other steps that we might sometimes might struggle with a lot but yeah. Um cool okay. So. That's for induction um any other questions you guys kind of want me to cover whether it's. Homework or relations or really anything in general is there anything I can help to? To discuss? Sure we can uh. Take a look at it okay so let's take I'll push you in the right direction at least and then and the world. And of the world tell us annoying oh god now remember that uh we can look at it for a bit sure. Uh is it uh this guy right here? Uh the A is equal to that stuff blah 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 okay yeah this one's a little bit uh rougher. It's uh a little bit rougher but I'll push you in the right direction. Okay um first things first first things first. What's a relation? Let's how about that let's start with that what's what's this relation crap that we're talking about? Gonna start with that we know what a relation is. It's okay not. Oh uh. A type of set um. Meh I wouldn't really go as far to say that. Um let's here let's see if I can give you a let's let's throw you guys into a kind of a crash course okay? Well a relation between a relation is a relation between two or more sets of values uh kind of though. We kind of advise you to use against using the word in the definition. Yeah but it's a little bit uh but it's on the right track so. I want you to think of relations basically as a bridge. No it was not well okay straight from Google while sometimes Google isn't the most. How shall we say trust Woody so what's up let's pull it up. So let's talk about it so I want you to imagine relations as bridges. Um so let's say you have two things that are like disconnected two separate ideas that are disconnected right? Um and what's the idea the basic idea is that relations connects two different ideas or things together. So as an example. A valuation that could be that coffee is hot notice that two ideas are being connected together coffee and hot. Thing that connects them together is the word is the word is becomes our bridge. So is becomes the relation so coffee is hot coffee is cold and coffee is expensive. Some makes sense? So far so good on that and most typically when we talk about relations. You write these relations or connections as coordinate pairs. So if we want to write this a little bit more formally a little bit more in the logic world. Like we could write it as the following coffee comma hot coffee comma cold and coffee comma expensive. Some makes sense? Any questions so far on that? So but before we go on let's just talk a couple about a couple of the relations that you probably have seen. In your lifetime again you might have not thought of it as such. But when we look back at what the basic definition relation is it makes a little bit more sense so for example equals. That's the the most the most common one you probably have seen in the mathematical world. You're connecting two different numbers and saying that they are equal to each other that's a connection. You could say that one number is greater than the other. Less than the other not equal to the other. Or if we're talking about the logic world the words and as well as the words or. Are also examples of relations cause you're connecting two things together. Heck even some concepts in the real world that have nothing to do with math or logic such as having a good conversation. That is also an example of a relation that cause you could connect two people by the fact that they are having a good conversation. There are infinitely many relations out there in the real world. But the point of the matter is all a relation is in general is have well two is anything that can connect to. Separate ideas together. Uh does that make more sense? Okay so now obviously. Actually that's a little bit more informal so let's kind of discuss a formal discussion. Okay so let's imagine we have two sets okay called A and B and what I want you to do. Is create what is called a Cartesian product a Cartesian product defined with the little cross symbol. I write it as the X um A cause B is a Cartesian product. And that is the set of all possible ordered pairs I can make. And the idea with this Cartesian product is that your X coordinate must come from the first set of set A. And your Y coordinate must come from the second set. So. Give me an example of a coordinate pair I can make with uh from the Cartesian product. Mm-hmm one comma two is one yeah. one comma two is one yeah uh anything else three comma one two comma three those are all those are all uh not to come at three because uh we don't have a value of three in our uh set B there's no value of three in our uh Y coordinates some makes sense we need to pick one yeah it's okay no worries so we're just saying pick a co- number from our or pick a value from our first set pick a value from the second set and connect them with with as coordinate pairs but the T L D R is that you can have one 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 two two one two two three one and three two um does that make sense so far alright so the question is why does this matter why are we talking about it well how this connects to relations is the fact that relations every relations in in general must be a subset of this Cartesian product or in other words you see this little set that we just made here your relation needs to be a subset of this cost product right here this Cartesian product does that make sense so far so as an example we have this as our set what is a possible subset of A cause B exactly the set containing one comma one so then that means a possible relation is the set containing one one do I know how it's connected no idea at all but it is a relation because by very definition then it is a subset of our cross product some makes sense yep and now we need to talk about a little bit about what makes relations well relations and this will start tying back into what we want you to talk about here so let's talk about those pop those things so in general general all these properties that we talked about is when you have poppin uh we are talking about uh when your relation is what we call homogenous basically to dumb it down very simply your domain and code domain or we call the code domain the range your domain and range needs to be using the exact same set of values some makes sense so far so good so there are six properties um we have a flexive symmetric antisymmetric transitive subjective and injective so far uh and these are like the six basic properties that we like to talk about um but for the sake of this problem I'm just going to talk about what is called the symmetric relation okay so when we talk about symmetricalations equations I want you to think of a perfect like a literal perfect reflection right so or kind of like reflecting across the line so whatever you see on one side right the reverse has to be present so think of it kind of like this um suppose I have Alice Bob Kale as my domain and code domain let's just say those are my values um and one of my relations that I could have is Alice Alice Bob Kale and Carol Bob my question to you is if this relation is symmetric it should yeah it turns out yeah it is because here's how we do it take every single point and flip their uh invert their uh X and Y coordinates so the op if I have Alice Alice I should also have uh Alice Alice which is what I have um if I have Bob Kale then the opposite of that is Carol Bob that's what I have here and the opposite of Carol Bob is Bob Kale some makes sense now the question is why we went through all that pain here so so if we're talking about symmetric relations if we have X comma Y who else should we have good let's look we know we need to have Y comma X now let's see here um now how many pairs can we create I want to know how many pairs we can create using just those four elements nope not four to the four think about how I think about how many pairs I made in my example when I talked about uh this thing here I was only able to make six here so think about what that connect hmm what is the magic trick so no worries so so just give me have a desk give me an example of a pair that you can make so what is an uh what is an example of a pair we can make we could have W W yeah that's one of them uh anything else Y Z that's another one yeah and so on and so forth right so how many how many pairs have W as their like X coordinate what about X also four uh Y and Z also four so how many total pairs can we make what is the total amount of pairs that we can make in this how many total different pairs do we have then the only question is well four to the four would imply four to the four would imply that uh they're independent of each other but it's not it's not a factorial either unfortunately nope not four here's a hint here's a hint and we have not two to the fourth so can we have W and X and Y and Z in the X coordinate at the same time no exactly what do we call those events so it's with a D so it's with the Y or D no worries we call these uh disjoint events the reason why this is important to note is with disjoint events joint events we don't multiply them together we add them together we add the values together so when we add them together we get four plus four plus four plus four which is sixteen some makes sense there are sixteen total pairs we can make so far so good on that now uh tech so technically then um these pairs making these pairs are not independent of each other if I make a X if I put W in my X coordinate that absolutely does affect who else could be in my my uh escorted because no one else can does that make sense that's why we kind of add them together rather than multiply does that make a little bit more sense cause deciding who gets to go into the escort it means everyone else cannot just get poised there automatically right so now we have now we have these things right so now we have sixteen new pairs to play with let's first discuss discuss this the total number of relations how many total relations are there uh no restr- with no restrictions no restrictions on it I just want a straight up relation how many relations total relations are there how many total relations are there it is quite a big number actually this one's quite uh large yes but the question is how large is it so let's think about it so let's kind of think about it from this perspective let's think of it of it from this perspective so do you remember that candy example I gave for counting and how I talked about the I think I called it the candy way it's okay if it doesn't like ring a bell but if it does might help you a little bit no worries so the T O D R okay so let's do it imagine that these pairs are like candy I want you to imagine that these are different candies different type uh different types of candy and the relation is a gigantic bag okay I want you to imagine that these are different types of candy and you have a gigantic bag called a relation that you want to like store them in so with respect to the bag back to the bag what can I do do with one piece of candy well we'll take it out implied that you had to do first in order to take a piece of candy out of the bag what do you need to do first let's assume uh also assume the bag is empty first assume the bag is also empty empties to start kind of yeah so think of it like this with respect to the bag what you can do is put the candy in the bag right if we're assuming that the bag is kind of like empty one of the natural choices that we could do is put it in uh the bag does that make sense so far what else can we uh but there's one more option what's that other option uh before we put it in the bag think of it like this you have an option to put the candy in the bag what's the opposite of dude of putting the candy in the bag like the little or opposite hmm sort of sort of it would it would be think of it as either put the candy in the bag or don't put the candy in the back exactly it's the like literal when I say literal poetry or opposite it's just literally the poor opposite some makes sense I know this is some on a bubble depth here but hopefully you'd agree that you have two options here put it in the bag or don't put it in the bag some makes sense so if that's the case uh what about the next what about the next piece of candy so let's just say I choose like the first option uh I choose something for the first piece of candy what's the what about that next piece of candy what if I put a twix in and now I have a sour patch what can I do with the sour patch exactly put it in put it in or simply don't put it in you think this you think these options change at all you think any of these options will change for any of the candy that I have yeah all sixteen pieces of candy have the same option and yeah why does this matter because you literally have just described in a reward example how to do how to figure out the total number of relations just just this time just in this time instead of thinking of candy replace the word candy with coordinate pair and replace the giant the bag with relation that's how we approach this pop so this analogy literally describes yeah X Y is sour patch every single coordinate pair you can ever create out of that little uh example that we did is a different type of candy how to the poss- uh the process of making a relation right does that make sense so to finish out this analogy we know that all sixteen pieces of candies have the same options so we have sixteen twos right we have these sixteen twos running around is a million dollar question what do we do with these sixteen tubes exactly we multiply we multiply them all out together because these events are independent of each other giving us giving us a total of two to the sixteenth and guess what by doing this little analogy you have figured out how many total relations there are therefore using this little anecdote though we have determined that there are are two to the sixteenth total relations some makes sense so far Now, obviously. This is a gigantic number. Let's not try to plug this into a calculator because it might ball up on us and hate us for a while. But. Some, yeah. Now. Let's attach. The restrictions we need. Okay, let's attach the restrictions. Again, this was assuming that we had no uh. Conditions on our problem, this was just saying A. Just make total relations. So what does our relation need to be? What property does it need to exhibit? Symmetric. So now, if you are needing to exhibit asymmetric relations, what does that mean? Like let's suppose I have A comma B. B. This is like a general generalized version. Yeah. I also need to have. To have. Its polar opposite. Does that make sense? You need to have, you need to have his polar opposites. Okay. So. Let's kind of talk about this for a bit. So how many pair, so how many pairs do I have? Yeah, sixteen. Out of those sixteen pairs. Pairs, we need. Notice that. Notice that some of them. But some of them have the same value in the X and Y coordinate. How many pairs exist, exist with this behavior? So. So. Let's put them to the side, let's put those guys to the side. Okay? So what? What does that leave us what? What does that, if I put those four? Four pairs to the side, how many like pairs am I left with? Twelve of them, yep. I'm left with twelve. Out of those twelve. What? How many? How many are required? How many pairs are required for my symmetry equation? Think of what you're required to put in this relation. Who's that one, who's that one that we need to put in? Right, okay, we we need uh XY, I agree. Anything else we need? We also. Need Y comma X. So we have ten pairs. Where the coordinates are different. This are different. And we have four pairs where the coordinates. Are the same. Now. It's just a matter of how you organize to me. So. My question is. My question is, my question is simple. It's simple. What do we? What do we do with this? This is where I'll leave you for this problem. My hit, as a hint, I'll give you a one final hint. Think of the anal- analogy we used earlier. To build the candy, uh to build the total. Uh number of operations. That might be very, very useful, yeah. That might be, there also might, but there might be a slight modification you need to it though. You may need to do. But that it, but for the most part, it'll stay consistent. Does that help explain a little bit more of what we are wanting you to do? In that problem? Yeah, no worries. Sounds good to me. Um any other questions you guys have for me? Sporrow, we can turn every relations question into a counting question. That's what we mean by its keyboard. So fun. Um any other questions you guys have for me, whether it's on counting or? Uh anything like that? Okay, uh. Yeah. Uh what music do I do blues to? Well, today was kind of a, like a lofi kind of music day. Um but usually I'm just. One of the. One of the songs that I do. Is either the uh. Like one of the songs I do, I need a pop version of this. Like I need. That's my lofi, but like if I want to jam out. Oh, I'm blasting those, I'm blasting the song like one hundred percent, this is like some high bass stuff, this is some bo- This is some bomb ass music, I don't care what you guys say. Uh but I have, uh it depends, I could be listening to like some rap music. I could be listening to some pops. Um Spanish dude. I could be listening to some like Daddy Yankee, whatever, whatever's on my mind. One hundred percent, I need some more, uh dude, Becky Gito, oh my god, I would, I'm. But uh yeah. That's pretty much what I listen to anyways. It's a fun time though. Um but if you guys have any other questions, let me know. And I will be more than happy to help you out. And I will see you guys. On the next time. Want to be there after class? Yes, I will. I most certainly will. And I'll see you guys there.